Welcome, everybody. I want to open the Ojai City Council and Joint Park and Recreation Commission meeting for August 13th, 2013, to order. And the first thing I'll do is ask the city clerk to roll call, please.
Commissioner Basor?
Here.
Commissioner Becker's not here at the moment. Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Commissioner Itner?
Here.
Commissioner Radek?
Here.
Vice Chair McCoryc Rylander?
Here.
Chair Haney?
Here.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Here.
Mayor Protem Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatt?
Here.
And Councilmember Smith is an excused absent.
All right. And if I could ask Chair Haney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have some speakers cards. And one of the thing about the workshop that we're going to be conducting tonight is that there isn't any time set aside on our agenda for anyone to speak on comments on any agenda items that aren't on our agenda. If you had a particular issue that you wanted to address, you're more than welcome. We'll be asking you to address us at that time. But I have four speakers cards, which just, I believe they just say at the beginning of the meeting, I'm not sure. How about Brett Lee? Are you here to speak on anything in particular?
Yeah, the skate park.
Okay. And Judith Brusius?
Yes, Ojai State.
Okay. And Tom Erickson?
Yes, this is him.
Okay. Well, then, I'll call you when we get to that. All right. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chair Haney for a brief recap of your department's progress.
Well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it's funny how we turn things over around here. I'm gonna go ahead and let Steve McClary and Sofaklis talk about the department for about five minutes.
Okay.
Apologize to speaking to the backs of some of the commissioners and council members. Thank you, Mayor Blatt, and members of the council and members of the commission. I will be brief. I'll take just a couple of minutes here. I just wanted to give it a recap on some of the things that we've been working on and some of our accomplishments in the past year in the Recreation Department. We've been busy the past year doing a reorganization of the department, the staffing and the priorities. And that was put into motion officially beginning July 1st. We've pared down a little bit of the full-time staffing of the department so that we could move some of our resources to additional part-time staffing. We had done a survey about a year ago that compared Ojai's Recreation Department to similar recreation departments in Southern California. And we found that in terms of the administrative costs, we were a little above the average. The reorganization puts us right back in the, in the middle of the pack with other recreation agencies. And so, we, we think we're now operating where we should be in terms of our staffing and exactly what we need to be able to get the job done. So, as I stated, we, we lost one full-time position, but we've able to bring on two part-time positions, and we're looking to possibly add a third one later on this fiscal year. Some of the other things that we've been working on, Ojai Day has been and continues to be a top focus for us. Last year was a transition year for us. We had coordinator who, for many, many years, was the heart and soul of Ojai Day. And trying to replace that person obviously was a daunting task. So, last year was a transition year, and this year, we are working with a new coordinator, Amber Young, who also works in the city manager's office. And Amber and her team are, have been very aggressive in terms of trying to go out and keep what people like about Ojai Day, but also bring on some new opportunities and some new amenities. We're trying to bring in more vendors to improve the flow and the footprint to the event. We had some little minor issues that we even worked out with the, with the water supply for the vendors at the park and on Ojai Avenue. I think we've got that all addressed now. And then, more than anything, we want it to be a good event that is representative of the community and its spirit. But we also are trying to work the budget. Last year, the event ran over $20,000 in the red. And we were trying to cut that down in half so that we're only running $10,000 in the red this year. The Recreation Department operates within the confines of its own budget. So, if we are short on revenues, we've got to find a way to cut our expenses. Conversely, if we can bring in some more revenue, we can do some more things with the department. So, every dollar that we can save on the Ojai Day event are funds that we can put into other recreational enhancements. But again, the concept is to make it an even better and stronger event than it has been. We're not looking to, to cut it down in order to reduce the budget. We're also working, taking some baby steps with developing and implementing a marketing plan. One of the main ways that folks find out about the classes and activities at the Recreation Center is through our activity guide, which comes out three times a year. It's distributed right now to the schools and is also available at city offices. This year, we're going to be trying a new way to get the word out. We're going to be doing a direct mail postcard to all residences in the Ojai Valley. And we're going to see how that works in terms of boosting the numbers of participation. So, again, we're, we're taking some baby steps on, on our marketing. And we're going to continue to experiment with that and see what works and what doesn't work. On the budget, I touched on that a little bit earlier. This past year, we, we actually, at one point, revised downward our anticipated revenues for the year. And I'm pleased to say, even though I don't have any final numbers at this point, so I'm not going to try and give final numbers since we don't have those yet. But I think we can say with confidence that we exceeded the revised budget revenue numbers. And we think we may have even reached or topped the original revenue estimate. So, mid-year, we were thinking we weren't going to get to where we were. So, we moved that down. And it looks like we may have met our, or exceeded our original target. So, but of course, we're still waiting for the, the final numbers on that. This year's also going to be a very exciting time for the Recreation Department with the adoption of the new budget. There's over $300,000 in capital improvements that will be going to the city recreational facilities. What we're trying to do is get what we have up to speed, so to speak. And then, from there, if we can get our house in order, we'll be looking at future years with maybe bringing in some additional recreation amenities. But we want to, we want to make sure that what we've got right now is clean, safe, efficient, and welcoming to the public. So, we've got some exciting opportunities in the next year coming for that. And then, last, I just want to say, we're, we're working really hard to try and build our presence in the community. We're, we're trying to work with different groups, like the Youth Foundation and folks. Our goal is to really try to make Sarzati Park and the Boyd Center the hub of recreational activity in the Ojai Valley again. So, that is, that is our top charge for this coming year. Wanted to thank the Parks and Recreation Commission and the City Council for their support on the adjustment to the non-resident fee. I know we talked about that a couple of times in this chamber. And we think that that fits it really well with our marketing efforts. We want, we need the numbers. We need people in the door to make our programs viable. And hopefully, this is an opportunity or a way to get some of the non-residents back and make participating in the Ojai Recreation Programs a bit more affordable for them. So, just wanted to again thank the members of the commission and the council, and also City Manager Rob Clark for your support over the past year. And certainly also to the recreation staff. It's been a time of transition and change for them. And they have stepped up to the plate repeatedly and delivered. Did I miss anything? Or do you have any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Any questions of Mr. McClary? I guess not. Thank you. And I personally want to thank you on behalf of the council for all your hard work in the last year. You, you brought a degree of organization and enthusiasm to the Park and Recreation Department, and it hasn't gone unnoticed. So, thank you.
You're very welcome.
It's always nice to get together with the commissions. And tonight, we've got a couple of new commission members, Brian Ford. How you doing?
Great.
Good. Welcome. And is, Dwayne, is, are you down there? Hi.
[laughing]
So, welcome, everyone. These, these workshops or special meetings are for two reasons. One is for us to hear about what's happening with the department, but also for, for you to bring to our attention anything that you think that we should be aware of or that we should be doing better than we are. It's more communication that we like to receive. We will be glad to answer any questions for you, too. But I feel as though these meetings are, are more beneficial for us because we don't get a chance to really meet with you guys as often as I would like.
Can I add something?
Sure.
You talked about, I also want to recognize that Sofaklis has done a lot of programming changing to the Recreation Department that the community has asked for, like opening up the Rec Center, free after-school during the holidays, dodgeballs back. And I think there's probably a couple of other things that you, you know, people were asking for to come back. And I appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you, Sofaklis. It's nice to have you there as well, truly.
I'm happy to be here.
The next item on our workshop is the skate park operations and policies. I presume I'll turn this back over to Mr. McClary. Are you going to talk on this, Mr. Haney?
You know, we, well, again, we discussed this at the last Recreation Parks Commission meeting, a great length, probably an hour, hour and a half. I, I don't know if we're going to be discussing the actual policy tonight because I don't have a copy of it in front of me. However, after a long debate regarding the skate park, most of the, the majority of the commission was in, was in strong belief that the way the policy's written and the way the procedures are and the way the skate park has been set up, that we're all in agreement that it should stay that way. With, with the concerns of, of citizens regarding, what are the little scooters? And so, one of the, one of the resolutions that came out of that was to maybe think about doing a mini scooter park at the Recreation Center and get the seven, eight, and nine, and 10-year-olds at that facility actually doing that. And then, as far as bikes, they're not a part of the policy right now, other than they're not allowed. And again, what, what we came to the conclusion on was, maybe we need to put together a group of people, and maybe we need to think about how we initiated this skate park, and maybe we want to do a BMX park. So, we're open to having that, to having that discussion with the public. And we're open with helping to form any type of committee like that. So, that's, that's what we talked about regarding the skate park.
All right. Thank you. Because there are people here, I'm going to let you have your say. The only thing keep in mind is we are limited to one hour for this meeting. It's not like a, a regular commission meeting or a regular council meeting where we take as much input from the public as we can possibly get. And we're not limited in time in doing that. We are limited tonight to one hour for this special meeting. So, I'm going to call on you to come up. I'd like you to be brief. And also, if somebody has already stated the same opinion in which you're going to state, then I wish you'd just say, you know, you want to mirror that, that opinion that's already been stated. The first one is Toby Green.
I'm here on behalf of the skate park also. And I know a lot of people from Skate Ojai. Spent a lot of time putting this together. And at the time, my son was a skateboarder, and now he's a BMX rider. And so, I have a different perspective now. And I really would like to work together with Skate Ojai. Whew, this is hard.
Take a breath.
To develop, you know, like if you were to go by the skate park right now, there's nobody in it. And there's a punch of BMXers that really want some time in there. And the BMXers without pegs aren't really harming the skate park. And I would love to see some hours for this, for the BMXers, that's all. I know that, I know the rules now are no BMXers. My kid got a ticket. I'm not fighting that. That's, he knew. He got warned. That's just the rules. But the problem is, there's a lot of kids in the community who need access to that on their bikes. I don't know about the scooters. I don't know what kind of damage they do to the concrete. But I do know that the tires on the BMX bikes aren't really hurting anything. And if we could write that in, and, you know, maybe there was, there would be some way of maybe charging the BMX riders an annual fee to participate because I know that the cost is an issue with the liability. And perhaps, we could work something out together.
Okay, thank you.
For these kids.
Thank you. Brian Buher?
Just to let you guys know a little about me. Fifth generation Ojai. Been here my whole life. Grew up in the third house built in Miners Oaks. And I think making these younger kids on the scooters that have wheels that are softer than skateboarders not allowed in there and getting them tickets that are hundreds of dollars is absolutely ridiculous. And my kids haven't gotten one yet. My kids look forward to going to the skate park. Now they don't. I hung around there today just to see what was going on. I saw a guy in a Volvo. Three different times, people are going up there and buying stuff from him. Can't tell you what it is, but I got a pretty good idea. Nobody does anything about it. But you're worried about some little kids on scooters? I think it's time for us to look at the youth and figure out a better opportunity for them instead of giving them tickets when they're just trying to have fun and not destroy other parts of Ojai.
Thank you. Judith Brusius?
Brusius. Brusius.
Hi. Thank you for having us here this evening. I pretty much want to mirror what was, was said earlier. I have raised a half a dozen kids here in town in Ojai, and four of them are boys. And so, I really know how important the, the skate park is to these kids. Not to mention the parents, but the kids have spent hundreds of hours creating the skate park and doing volunteer work and helping to, help to design what the skate park was. And I, I really feel that it's important to keep it as a skate park. And the idea of having other facilities for the, the racers and the BMX is a great idea. And when you have those, those three means of sports taking place at the same time, you've set up a really dangerous situation. I love to roller skate. I've had my eye on Libby Park tennis courts for years. I would love to roller skate there. And I don't think it would be okay if I skated when people were trying to play tennis. So, and, and as far as the tickets go, that's a really unfortunate part of it. So many of our boys got $250 tickets in the beginning. And that's just a part of it. So, I would really appreciate it if you would uphold the rules as they are stated now for everybody's safety and concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Lee?
Yeah, I'm here also. My son is one that received a ticket there. He's been going there all summer. Through this whole duration, the sheriff's department would show up and tell them that they needed to leave, but they can come back in an hour and ride. And they did that throughout the whole summer. Then, all of a sudden, you come back with the ticket day. You can't do that to nine and 11-year-old kids. What's that telling them? You know, and to stop them from enjoying themselves at the park, you know, and the damage, you know, I don't think there's any more difference between axles on a skateboard to the bottoms of an aluminum scooter. There would be more damage from the axles of the skateboard, skateboard itself. And it would be nice if you guys could work something, you know, even if it's a tie frame. You know, everyone seems to get along. But if you do, you know, enforce the laws, there's hardly anybody wearing helmets or kneepads. I mean, if you can enforce one, you might as well enforce them all, like the lady said.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Lee, can I ask you a question? You were talking just about scooters, right? So, could, may I ask in the audience, who is here on the scooter issue and who is here on BMX?
Well, the
So, you guys are basically hand in hand?
Yeah, sometimes you ride the scooter, sometimes you ride the bike.
Tom Erickson?
Okay, you should just go.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to come forward and speak? Sure. Lately, in the front. Come on up forward.
So, what we've resorted to now is taking a load of kids to the Santa Clarita Skate Park, the Fillmore Skate Park, the Santa Paula Skate Park, all the other skate parks in the county, which, which allow all of these to exist together. And they do just fine. The kids have a really nice etiquette. They know how to stay out of each other's way. The only etiquette problems that are happening are some of the adult skateboarders are, you know, shooting their skateboard into the kids' bikes. And there's a conflict happening. So, there just needs to be some rules set, either the timing or open this up to everybody, whatever it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Hilgers?
Hi, council commissioners. Chet Hilgers, President, Skate Ojai. It's amazing how popular this park is. And the only thing I can say is, if the criteria is, if we want to change the use of a park, my two girls ride horses. And we'd love an equestrian center at Sarzati Park. You know, it's, the skate park was designed and built specifically for skateboarding. And that's, that's the way the flow was designed. That's the way it was manufactured and built. And to change the use after the fact, it would be cost prohibitive, and you'd have to supervise it. And that's not going to happen. So, what I would say to the people that want a BMX, I think it's great. Let's build a BMX park somewhere. Get everybody together and do that. There were, there were nearly 1,600 people that gave in some way to the skate park. That's a lot of people to consider when you want to change the use for a few people who want to ride bikes. So.
We were some of those people, though.
[inaudible]
I'm sorry.
But to the, to the people who, who now ride bicycles, get together and build a BMX park. It's, it's like someone said, you can't change the use of the tennis courts after you build the tennis courts to skateboarding.
What's the difference between scooter?
And, and what?
All right.
It's the use. Someone riding a scooter.
Chet, okay, that's, we're not going to have a conversation between you and the audience. Chet, let me ask you. At the time that all the public hearings took place with regard to the construction of the skateboard park, how many people from BMX were there to participate and, and wanted to have a joint facility?
I couldn't name one name right now. I couldn't remember one person.
Okay. And how about scooters?
Zero.
Okay. Mayor Protem Strobel?
Yes, we've had this discussion at the council level several times. And I am, when we started discussing this, we went over all the reasons why the skate park was built and designed for skateboarders, not BMX. I am still of the opinion that the people that work so hard to produce this skate park can work just as hard to produce a BMX park. But I personally do not support converting the skate park for BMX or scooter uses.
What's the difference between scooters?
That's enough. There's no, no, no time.
Mayor Blatt, could I ask?
Councilwoman Laura.
Chet Hilgers a question?
Yes.
Chet, I was just wondering, is there information out there why it's, there's a difference between riding a scooter and a BMX to skateboard at the skateboard park? That we could inform the public of what the difference is?
The number one issue between riding, somebody riding on a skateboard, somebody riding on a bicycle is collision. And the flow between BMX bikes and skateboarding. When the guys designed the skate park, guys and girls, designed the skate park, they had that specific use in mind. When you change the use and you get somebody on a bicycle riding in the skate park, it's dangerous. And you'll notice you get five grown men, like the size of me, or size of these guys, or size of any one of you, riding a bicycle in the skate park, the skateboarders leave. I mean, it's not safe. So.
Thank you. One of the things, yes, Mo?
Deborah Mo, Skate Ojai. Last night, I heard somebody pull up in front of my house, and it was two young men opened up their trunk and got out their skateboards. So, I immediately went out and said, hey, you guys want a T-shirt? You know, because I have skate park T-shirts. And I asked them why they were skating, and I live up by Clough Park, why they weren't at the skate park. One of them had a broken wrist from diving out of the way of a BMX bike. He had just gotten over his broken wrist, excuse me. But, and I said, well, do you guys speak up? Because I know that there's parks where skaters man their own rules. And they said it was too negative that they didn't want to get into confrontations and stuff, but they felt it was too dangerous to skate at the skate park, especially when the bikes were there. There's also the liability issues that come with the scooters. It's not a manned park. There's nobody, you know, there's nobody hired there to, what do you say, protect, supervise? Yeah, couldn't think of the word. So, that's another issue. But what I would say is, Skate Ojai, I mean, we worked on, on this park for over 15 years. We would more than be willing to step up, well, this person would. I know that several people would be willing to step up and help create a scooter BMX park. So, that is definitely a possibility.
All right. Thank you. So, anybody else want to speak? Yes.
I have something to say and something to ask. This is nerve-wracking up here. I would like to know what the difference between a scooter and why skates are allowed and skateboards, but not scooters? Because the word skate is in it. So, you can use skates and inline skates, but not a scooter, just because there's a pole? And, I mean, I can see the bicycle and the scooter and the skate thing. I, I get that. But maybe make different hours? Because if the scooters aren't harming the skate park, then maybe we can do different hours. And I don't understand why you're saying that it's going to have to be manned more if scooters are there. What's the difference between scooters and skateboards? Why would it have to be manned or supervised more? I don't understand that.
There may be an issue of liability because of the age of the scoot people, the scooter people. They're probably younger.
There's a lot of young skateboarders, too. And also, I'd like to touch on, you know, if one rule is enforced, all of them should be enforced. Because I see many spectators, because I've looked at the website, and I know all the rules now, because I didn't know it was illegal to ride your scooter in there until I, my son received a ticket. But spectators are in there, sitting in their chairs. There's several kids without helmets, kneepads, elbow pads, you know, all the above. So, I think if we enforce one of them, we're going to enforce all of them.
All right. Thank you. I, yeah, go ahead.
Skateboarding is considered a hazardous sport. So, and scooters are not. So, that releases liability in the state of California, like football and all the other sports that are listed in that category. So, that's just one reason why.
I think that the, yes.
I have a question. I think Chet would probably be able to answer. Is he still here? Chet, I have a question. Do the BMX bikes and the scooters do any damage to the park?
The way, when, when we originally built the park, we did not have enough money to armor the park, to build in steel plates on all the edges and everything. And somebody made a point. They said, you know, there's metal on the skateboard trucks. Yeah, there is aluminum pot metal on skateboard trucks, but nothing like a bicycle when you slam it down on coping or something like that. And you can't police what guys bring into the parks. And guys come from literally hundreds of miles to ride BMX bikes. We went through a similar thing with Lake Forest when I worked on the Vance Park down there. And guys came to council meetings that lived hundreds of miles away to come and rally support so they could ride bicycles in the skate park. Well, they didn't have it set up for that.
So, is, I haven't been there recently. Is there damage that's apparent that's chipped? Is there chipping off the edges at this point?
We fixed some. But, you know, how can we tell what it's from?
Yeah.
We can only suspect. But of course, you know, it's, it's not rocket science to figure out that if you take a big hunk of metal that's on a bicycle and a guy the size of the guy in the red shirt is riding it, and he slams down on the coping, what's going to happen? The whole thing's going to come off. So.
Thank you, Chet. Sage?
I was just going to ask. I think we need to agendize this. I think it needs to come to the Parks Commission. I think there's room for a lot more discussion. And I think it would be best done at one of our meetings. Only in that I don't, we didn't, I don't think we're ready with all of the information and everyone. But everyone should come back, and we should have a meeting and set up a time, and let's have the discussion. But I think tonight, I would, we have about a half an hour left. And since we only do this once a year, I'd love to see us move forward with the rest of our agenda and not lose some of the other items that were coming up. some of the other items that were coming up. So let's, can we, Steve, can we put that, can we agendize anything tonight, or?
Well, my suggestion was that there, there were a couple of issues that I think create difficulty when it comes to the, to the BMXs and the scooters. And that is that when the skateboard park was designed with all of the input from the public, there was very little, if any, input from any scooter people or from any bike people. And it was not, and it was not designed nor opened for any purpose to do with bicycles. It was open solely for the purpose of skateboards. And that's something you're going to have to overcome if you want to be able to do anything else there. The second thing is that there could be some liability issues when you talk about the scooters. Now, with that being said, I think it should be referred back to the, to the Park and Recreation Commission. Have an agenda, have it as a discussion item, and you can get all the public input you want. But as far as the people that are here with regard to bikes and scooters, you know, it took years and years and years of effort for the skateboarders to put that park together. And they did it. And there was very little, if any, input from bicyclists. That's for sure. That's why the park didn't allow them. That's why it wasn't designed for them. And now after the fact, when you want to come forward, it's going to create a problem. So if you guys want to get out on, out on the, on the street and start getting signatures and petitions, and try to get enough petitions so that you can try to do your own park, or even get enough signatures on a petition that it's going to bring to our attention that there's a whole lot of bicyclists that want to use that park, and then we can determine whether they're going to do any damage to it, then that's what I suggest you do. But I would like to see it go back before the Park and Recreation on another time, because we really can't spend any more time on it tonight. So thank you for being here, and I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor, briefly, I would like to weigh in on this myself, because I, I was on council for the last, like, three to four years of this negotiation, and nobody ever came forward about BMX, ever. It was designed for skateboard park, skateboards only. And it was made very clear, and this discussion did come up, and it was basically stated by council that if somebody wanted a BMX park, that they needed to do, like Skate Ojai, and go out and pound the payment and get the donations and get the location and do it. And I, I just don't think that it's appropriate to now allow them at this point, because it's not designed for it.
Yep. All right, moving on. Number three in our agenda is park and recreation facilities needs. Mr. Haney?
Well, we're not going to touch on that skateboard, tonight, so.
No.
Recreation and Parks Facility Needs. Steve, why don't you? I'm sorry.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. You know, I just want to say one thing, though, regarding the skateboard park thing. I just, I just want to make it clear to anyone out there that the Recreation and Parks Commission is set up for the community and for the citizens, and we want you to come to our meetings, and we want you to come and talk about this issue. I just want to be clear on that. We welcome it, and we want you to come. Okay. The Park and Recreation Facility Needs, we had created a, a list, and I don't know if we, if we brought it, Steve, tonight.
Well, we didn't, we had gone through the, the process of, when we were working through the budget, we brought to the Parks Commission a couple of times the, you know, list of, of potential improvements.
Right.
And of course, we've, that has now been integrated into the capital improvement plan that was, that the Parks Commission supported and the city council adopted back in June. It's been a while since we've been able to put some money into the facilities. And as I mentioned during the preamble there, we're really focusing on trying to get our existing facilities repaired and where they need to be. However, we also are looking, trying to look down the road a little bit, because we're seeing some potential opportunities, maybe this fiscal year, maybe future fiscal years, where we could put in some additional facilities. For, for example, and I have to put a disclaimer here, because this is, we're, it's kind of pie in the sky, but, you know, there's been a lot of discussion from the Parks Commission about the need to have an outdoor basketball court. We don't have money in this round of capital improvements, but we've got it potentially projected in a future fiscal year, in fact, maybe as soon as fiscal year fourteen, fifteen. But of course, we're a little, we're way ahead of ourselves here. We haven't started talking about next year's budget yet, we're just starting into this year's budget. However, having said that, we've started having some meetings with staff and an ad hoc committee of the commission to look at the master plans that are on the books for both Sarzati and Libby. And right now, we're focusing a little bit more on, on Sarzati. And again, you know, is there a spot there where we could put an outdoor basketball court, a discussion like that? Where would be a good place to put it? Do we need to have a full-size court? Do we need to have multiple baskets? What, what best needs the recreational needs? So we've, we've, we've started talking about that, and we've also been looking at the, the backside of Sarzati. Again, I know this is probably a few years down the road, but some discussions in terms of, is that the best location for the playground? Do we want to move the playground where it's more visible, where it's closer to the street? Are there some enhancements and changes that we could do to the parking and the drop-off area? We talked about how wonderful it would be if we could reconfigure that, the horseshoe drive-in there through the, the parking lot to maybe create a drop-off lane, and then maybe reconfigure the rest of the parking lot to try and maximize that space. So we've met two or three times now, and we will be meeting again to try and come up with a plan that we can take to the Parks Commission and then see where it goes from there.
Well, Steve, also, one of the things that we've, that we've never had is actually a five-year program. We've never really had anything identified as to how we're going to enhance the facilities, and that's just come recently. So just even starting with that, and the fact that we have some revenues that are set aside, and that, that we've recognized that the facilities need to be upgraded and maintained differently, is a bonus. And again, as far as the, I keep missing that, with the little scooter guys. You know, again, we've got a five-year plan, and we've got money set aside for specific projects, it's not to say that those can't be changed. You know, we're debating right now whether to, you know, which facility, Libby Park or Sarozoti, regarding having the play equipment replaced. They both need it, what's the priority? So those are the things that we're discussing. And again, having a five-year program and actually having some priorities benefits the public and benefits all the citizens. So it's a great starting point, I'm glad we have it.
Anything else on facilities? Any questions by the council or other comments by the commission?
The ad hoc committee that we're speaking of, I think, is a really nice opportunity and a good start for us, because I think long-term, we've all wanted to work toward longer-term planning, and having a capital improvements plan over a five-year span has given us the time and the opportunity to go in and literally physically go into Sarozoti and take another look at it. I know staff time is precious, and that may be something that we butt up against over time, maybe needing a little more staff time or additional help bringing that to fruition, so that we're not just drawing pictures on paper for ourselves, but putting together maybe a little more of a plan from these ideas. But I think the beauty of what we're doing is, we're talking about putting together a picnic area that's covered, which is fabulous. But let's, we're, let's go a step farther and look at that park, and what do we want it to look like? What do we want the whole park to look like five years from now when we've done three projects? And so I think our ad hoc committee is working hard at that, and we're out on the ground. But I, and what we're identifying is lists of things, and so say we put the picnic structure up, let's make sure that we have all matching tables. So we put it next to the old barbecue, let's make sure that we created, you know, a whole look to that park that's going to bring it up and make it, because we do want it to be the hub of all of our recreation, and something that we're proud of. And we are, you know, Sarozoti is a busy place. So I think, at least our ad hoc committee, much of what we're focusing on is, how do we get from where we are, looking at the money we're going to spend and the projects we're going to do? And not just do it project by project, but let's look at a bigger, grander vision of what we ideally would love to see at this park. And it's very doable. And so the difference between just adding the cover and making sure that all the tables match, and finding possibly a service group to help us with the barbecue, to give it a facelift, it's all possible. I think for us, though, it's going to take, we're going to keep at work at what we're doing and writing down our ideas, we might need some more assistance from a staffing perspective to pull it all together. Because as much as I can draw pictures and we can go out there and we can talk about what it is, to get it on paper, to have it be a really useful, small document even, we, we need maybe some assistance in that. And I know that staff is, time is a premium. I don't know how to go about that, but from my perspective, it is a good time to go after that. And possibly, the tax revenue funds of this twenty thousand dollars, maybe there's a place to dip in there for bits and pieces with a guided focus on how to use that, so that we can get where we want to be in Sarozoti. And have some more technical support in, you know, we walked out there with tape measures, and we measured out where, where, you know, we could have a basketball court, but we could use some maybe more technical assistance. I think we're at a point now where we're getting close to having that list that someone could act upon. So that's a report back.
Well, I think, I think also that this list, you know, there's, there's two, two things that we're trying to achieve. One is maintenance, and one is enhancements. So the maintenance are ongoing, and that's probably what this five-year plan does. Enhancements is what we're, is what that committee is working on, and also being, the committee being able to take that to the commission and allow some public comment on it also.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and just keeping, this, making sure that our, our enhancements and our deferred maintenance go hand in hand to create what we want ultimately.
Great. What would be nice is if, if there was any money in the budget, to have a master plan, you know, a blueprint, put together for Sarozati. I think that would be, I think that would really be something that we should be trying to work towards. You know, get somebody that really knows recreation facilities, and take a look at the foot, you know, the overall lot that that's on, and where we have our buildings, and where we have our fields, and, you know, where the bathroom is, and that kind of thing. And be able to really, you know, give us a, you know, a, you know, a top view of the best use from a recreation facility standpoint that we could do there. I don't know how much something like that would be, but I don't think it would be that much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We, with this committee, I think we're getting to that point now, that's what we're requesting. We're, we're to a point now to where we actually physically could sit down with a planner or something-
Yeah.
-and start to put it together. I think one of the things that the committee is looking at also is by the projects that we have, each one's going to envelop as the other one is finishing. So we're going to, we want it to continue on a, a program to where we can, we can get it all done. But I also agree with Chair Haney that if we have to take a different course to, to assist with other, other people's needs or wants and stuff, we should really look at that too, and incorporate that into the master plan. Now, and, and I really feel that, like Sage was saying, that, that we actually need these folks to start coming to our Parks Commission, because we, we, we can't be informed by, without people being there. And so we need the support of the public. I mean, that, I think, is really one of our, our biggest avenues, is we need the support of the public. Come and tell us what you want, so that we can look at it, and we can all agree that, yes, we need to move forward in that. But I think right now, and, and I've, I've got to thank this gentleman here, and along with Greg for our Public Works Department, for the outstanding support that they're giving the commission. These, I don't, I, I don't know what we would do, and Sophocles and all of his folks being out there, all coming together and, and seeing the need and wanting to put it in. But, but this gentleman here needs a big credit.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I just want to agree with Robert, and really looking beyond five years, and looking at the entire community. And when we did look through that document with the tax funds, planning was part of that. So if that's possible, to create a master plan, and whether we contract someone or to work with.
Counselwoman Clark?
I have a, it sounds like it's coming out of left field, but I've been thinking about this a lot, and I probably am going to have to have a legal answer about, can a city run something that generates revenue for a department? Mr. Clark or Mr. Fletcher, wake up over there. The question was, can?
Joe says yes.
Can, okay.
You know, I, I think that, I think the longer answer, though, is that recreational revenues are general fund revenues, and so you, the council can choose by policy to reinvest those in recreation.
Okay, well, here's my question. I look at this farmer's market, this has grown to sixty booths. And I look at that, and it's own, it's being operated by a, by a profit person from out of town. It doesn't benefit the community, other than, of course, it benefits us as far as a farmer's market. But I'm thinking, I think it's a five-year stint of an encroachment permit that they pay three hundred fifty dollars for five years to use the parking lot, and the city gets no revenue off of this at all. So I'm thinking, I think it was renewed a couple, three years ago, why don't we consider possibly not renewing it, take it into the city, and have it be a revenue generator, and have the money for each booth, have it be a twenty-five-dollar fee per booth, or whatever? And that money goes into the recreation department.
Great idea.
Didn't you guys, you guys just- Didn't you just discuss the fees recently with them?
Oh, the fees were that they, there, there was a fee that was added, a fifty-dollar per-market fee to help with the plaza maintenance, because we just raised all the fees to all the merchants in the, in the plaza to pay for maintenance, and they were paying nothing at the farmer's market. So we added a fifty-dollar per-market fee, so.
Because I, I like that idea, but I also don't want to exclude farmers, you know, from being able to pay the booth fees and-
Yeah, and, and that, I think, it's so hard to know the economics of that market, because we've had no auditing of the market or anything through the years that it's been there. So the city has absolutely no idea what kind of money is generated from there, whether there are sales taxes, when something is an non-food item, has been sold, whether we're getting the sales tax revenue from that. It's not going to the community, it's not benefiting the community. And to me, it's to, something that should, to benefit the community. So I personally would like to have that be a discussion at some point.
Any other questions and comments on facilities? All right, we've got about ten minutes left, twelve minutes, so we'll go to community partnerships.
Paul, do we want to talk about revenue enhancements?
Oh, yeah, revenue enhancements.
I think that's probably the, probably the biggest thing that we wanted to talk about was that we did discover that twenty thousand dollars laying in a, I don't know what we want to call it, cost recovery fund, or some revenue line item, however, whatever it was. What we wanted to, to, to bring to the council was, how can we take a look at that? It was written back in the seventies, I believe, or sixties, how we can bring it into the two thousands, and how we can look at not just maybe new development, but also, there's probably more remodeling in Ojai than there is new construction. But how we can bring that together, while you guys are in the, the phase of, of the reorganization of, of planning right now, aren't we, regarding?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly what, what revenues are earmarked for park and recreation. Steve, do you know?
Are, are we talking specifically this, this tax?
Yeah.
So as I understand it, it's, you know, the, the funds got a little over twenty thousand dollars in it, and it was a tax that was approved by the city back in the early seventies. And it's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's as units are built, they, they pay a set fee into that. And the idea of the tax is that it could be used at some point in the future to offset the impacts of the additional residences, you know, so that we can build and maintain our recreation facilities to, to basically track with the growth. It didn't, taken a lot of money for, for a number of years, and then there was a fair amount of activity, I want to say, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's built up pretty slowly over time, and it's a pretty small amount. We had a, had a couple of discussions with the city manager on this, and we believe that it's a, that it's, it's actually a tax and not a development impact fee. Oftentimes, you'll, you'll see cities, when somebody comes in and they, they, you know, they, they build a new home, and, you know, the city has determined that it has some type of impact on the public facilities, and so then there's a, an impact fee that is collected towards that, it's then held and then put toward, you know, future projects down the road. In this particular case, our understanding is it's actually a tax and not a development impact fee, which means in order to change it or increase it, you would need a, I believe you would need a vote of the electorate to approve that. So, so it's a little limited, then, in terms of, of what we can do with it, just because it doesn't generate a whole lot of money too quickly. But there is an opportunity, I think, down the road to put some of that money towards some type of, of a recreation improvement. But I don't know that we, well, I know, we have not had that discussion at the, at the Parks Commission level. So that may be something we want to have as discussion down the road, but I don't know what the, what the council's position is on that as well.
Well, is this a, is this an ongoing tax for those-
Well, is this, is this an ongoing tax for those properties that's collected every year?
No, they, they pay it, the building permit, I believe, it's a building.
Oh, it's a building permit fee?
Right.
It's the same thing where you would go in, for example, if you're going to build a home, you would have to go to, I mean, a fight school district and pay a certain amount.
Okay, I gotcha.
That's what was established, but as we started looking into it, the fee is so low compared to other cities, and so that's what got us to thinking about including the 20% of that, that could be money that is set aside for other things, other than, you know, us worrying about having to go out and find extra money here or there. It's something that would come in. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of building that goes on in Ojai, and so it's gonna remain low.
Okay.
But it's been a bit of an education process for both the commission and staff, and learning about this and how it can be used. So, I think that was the gist of it.
Also, the reality is, we've collected $20,000 in 40 years.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's not a lot, whatever it is, and it needs to be upgraded.
Buildings going on.
Well, and again, there's a lot of building in, again, probably more refurbishments or re-dos in Ojai than actually new construction, but, so I think, I just think it needs to be looked at. And the two ways that you proposed it, there's a Quimby Fund, and maybe our attorney can speak to that, but that's what I'm aware of, and I don't know how that, if it's already on the books, how we could attach ourselves to it.
If I could, I don't, I was just checking with the manager, I don't know if the city has a Quimby fee, and Quimby fees are collected as part of subdivisions. It's part of the subdivision map act. We do very little subdivisions in the city, of course, so Quimby fees, but that's one. I just, I was actually reading this, it is very interesting, it's a tax passed 1972, it's $70 a new dwelling unit. What, the, this modern form is not a tax, but an impact fee, where you, and actually what you do is you take what you're doing now, developing your master plan, impact fees can only be charged for expansion of facilities caused by the demand on facilities by growth in the community. It can be both commercial and residential, as long as you're, 'cause, you know, visitors and commercial users also use parks, so it's either adding park space, park land, or intensifying parks like building a basketball court, so you increase your inventory of active park facilities. You develop a master plan, you develop what, you determine that's gonna be, and then you have to do a nexus, we call it a nexus study, which determines what level those needs are created by the growth in the community. And then you create either on a per-foot, per-bedroom, per, you know, there's various methodologies you can use that comes up with the fee. Again, in a community that's not growing, in a community that has policies about growth, that's gonna be a difficult area to raise a lot of new revenue, and very what happens is not unlike you talking about this $20,000, you get some money and it doesn't cover any one facility, you know, so you end up mixing this money with grant funds and general fund monies and maybe donations to be able to raise enough capital to do some capital expansions. And the other choice you have also is, you know, in California, all taxes must go to the voters now. So, the voting power is held by the voters, the taxing power is held by the voters of the city. So, you can adopt a general tax, which is not specific for one purpose, with a majority vote of the community, you can adopt a special tax with, which is set aside for a particular purpose with a two-thirds vote, and that can be passed on, you know, like a per parcel tax, an annual tax, there's a lot of other methodologies if you can raise the political will to, for the community to tax itself.
So, if you were to rewrite this document and possibly raise a fee, not necessarily change, other than a fee change?
Mm-hmm.
Would you, would that have to go as a vote?
You know, this is, you wouldn't do this, a tax is a general revenue raising methodology. This is written as, back when the city councils could adopt taxes. This is written as a tax, but it's really as an impact fee, because it's based upon a per-unit basis of new growth in the city. So, it's really as an impact fee, probably before there were a lot of impact fees around. So, you could amend it, you could amend it a million different ways. My recommendation would probably be, would, instead of using a tax, which has to go to the voters, and this is, and if, this is a special task, 'cause it's for parks for a purpose, so it'll take a two-thirds vote, but you could do, the city council can adopt an impact fee, which does much of the same thing, if you're only focusing on raising funds from new development.
All right, we only have a couple minutes left. Community partnerships? Who wants to discuss that?
Well, again, we'll turn it over to Steve. He's been our speaker tonight.
Well, it's a, it's a nice topic to end on. We've talked a lot over the last year or so about trying to get reintegrated with the community. We've made some efforts towards that. In fact, Sophocles might wanna talk about, real briefly, what we're doing with the Youth Foundation coming up in the fall.
Sure, the Youth Foundation and actually the Ojai Film Society, we've partnered with them to show four movies beginning in September, so every Friday night, I think it's the second Friday of each month, and we'll go for four months, and we'll be showing those movies for free for middle-school, high-school-aged children in our multipurpose room. So, we've developed that partnership, and we're hoping to do more, reach out to schools more and other local youth groups to get them to either use our park or enroll in programs in our park. So, that's what I do when I'm there, is focus on programming and adding programming, and when you talk about generating revenue, that is our focus, not only to generate revenue, to make sure we're covering our costs, but also to provide a nice service to the community, to give a wide range of activities that either aren't already being offered, that we need to offer there, or just try to do it a little better than what may already be offered. So, we're excited about what's happening and the direction the department's going in, and we'd like to, though, get more of a demographic of the older group, older citizens, and Gary Ryan, our fitness trainer, is adding a new program for seniors, so we're always looking to add new programs.
Or not quite seniors.
Weight training.
Some of us are.
Yeah. We'll say over 50.
There you go.
Well, thanks for the plug on the Friday night movies, and then the other thing that we've talked a little bit about is holding an open house at the Boyd Center to invite anybody and everybody who has an interest or works with recreation or has ideas on recreation. Again, back to my preamble, you know, we really wanna make Sarzadi and Boyd the hub of recreation for the Ojai Valley. We had talked about doing an open house in the fall, and now with the capital improvement plan, we're gonna have some office remodel and improvement, so we figured, why not a better time to wait until we get that done, and then we're gonna plan our open house and invite folks, and just talk about recreation, and see what's missing, and see what else is out there, and see what potential partnerships we might be able to forge.
Great. Well, it's time to bring the meeting to a conclusion. Thank you to the commissioners, council members, members of the public, thank you for being here. As always, it's nice to get together with the commissions and have one of these. We should do it more often. Thank you, Chair Haney.
Thank you.
We are now adjourned.